All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you. This is a regular city council meeting for September 20, 2022. And we'll call the meeting to order. If you would join me, please, in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
And roll call, please.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
Jay David Reed.
Present.
Ed Yulaberry.
Here.
All city council members are present.
Thank you. Are there any changes or additions or deletions to the agenda?
Not that I am aware.
Thank you. Now we have a proclamation for Constitution Week. And we have a member of the public that's here to receive that. So this proclamation is for Constitution Week, whereas September 17, 2022 marks the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting improper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through September 23, 2022, as Constitution Week in the City of Montrose, Colorado, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness herof, I herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Montrose this 20th day of September 2022.
Yes, I just would like to remind everyone about Constitution Week and what rights we have been given because of this document. So be proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we move on to item number six, Call for Public Comment for Non-Agenda Items. The Call for Public Comment Agenda Item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Are there members, any members of the public that would wish to address council at this Seeing none, we'll move on to item number seven. Item number seven is our Consent Agenda, City Council Consideration of the Minutes of the September 6, 2022 Special City Council Meeting and the Minutes of the September 6, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting, and City Council Consideration of an Application for a Special Events Permit for Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club to Serve Alcohol in Conjunction with the Closure of the 500 Block of Main Street for the Dinner on Main Event on September 24. And I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
And roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glassbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And now the fun part of the evening. Item number eight is our Youth City Council Applicant Interviews. We will interview applicants for the Montrose Youth City Council for the 2022-2023 term. And our first applicant is Grace Hotson-Piller. And if you would, come to the microphone and tell us about yourself a little bit.
Hi, my name is Grace Hotson-Piller. I think I know pretty much all of you guys. I'm a senior this year at the high school, and this will be my third year in City Council. All right, is that a little bit better? All right. Do you want me to re-say all that, or? Okay.
And so just kind of a quick explanation of what we're going to do. We're going to ask each applicant, what should you tell us a little bit about yourself? We're going to ask you one question. We're going to rotate that amongst the city council members. I'll ask question one. Mayor Protam Bynum will ask number two. Mr. Reed will ask three. Mr. Glassbell, four. Mr. Yulaberry, five. So we'll just kind of cycle it through, so we don't have to take a whole bunch of time. So my question to you is, what do you think the biggest challenge or issue facing youth in our community today?
I think probably the drug problem in Montrose is a really big thing, specifically with vaping and nicotine products. I mean, even at the high school, the bathrooms are just filled with kids vaping and using e-cigarettes. And I think it's really hard for kids to say no this day and age, and especially in Montrose.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Now Lucero Morales-Radales.
So Lucero's not present.
Okay. We'll move on to Sienna Beller.
Hi, I'm Sienna Beller. I'm a senior in high school, and this is my first year applying for Youth City Council.
I'm going to ask you a question. What do you most hope to learn by serving on the Montrose Youth City Council?
What I would most hope to learn is how the youth can be involved in the city, because I think that it's difficult just going to the high school to be really involved with the town. Like, there's a lot of opportunities to be involved with sports and clothes, but I think with Youth City Council, it'd be really easy to just get involved with the adults in the community and understand how the youth can be present in Montrose County.
Very good. Thank you. Angie Packard.
And Angie Packard is not present.
Thank you. Maggie Ellen Cusar.
Hello, I'm Maggie Cusar. I'm a freshman at the high school, at Montrose High School.
I get to ask you a question now. What ideas do you have to help the youth city council represent all youth in the Montrose community?
I think that we can get, like, more involved at the high school with, like, flyers or our social media at the high school, and working together with the schools so that the youth know about it. And, like, I'm in marching band, and that's 100 kids right there, and you can put up flyers in the band room, and everyone will see it every day.
Thank you.
Sidney Bell.
Hi, I'm Sidney Bell, and I'm in ninth grade at the high school.
Now, I'm going to be the one to ask you your questions this evening. What would you like to change in our community and why?
I think that we could maybe redo some of the part right before the, like, by the new police station in the plaza, we could redo the rivers and repaint them so that they look nicer for when we have our Saturday, our Saturday, nah, like.
Farmer's Market.
Farmer's Market, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Chloe Keen.
Hi, I'm Chloe Keen, and I'm a freshman in high school, and this is my first year applying for Youth City Council.
Mr. Yulaberry.
Boy, I'm going to ask you tough one. What was the best step that were given to us in some of these questions? Don't really address what I think would be a good question for one of you, and I hope that you don't mind, you know, the council doesn't mind. But my question is, why do you want a position that is sometimes a thankless job?
I think to, I feel like it's just rewarding to know that you can, like, help others, even if you're not, like, getting paid or anything like that. It's just rewarding to know that you can help our community.
Thank you.
Hunter Barton, also not here.
No, he's also not here. Said he was going to be 15 minutes late, so he might show up at a later time.
If he shows up a little later, we'll go ahead and squeeze out an interview, and no problem at all. I would like to thank all of you for coming in. I'd like to thank you specifically for applying to be on Youth City Council. I think it's a very important step, and as Grace knows, that it's a great journey, and you learn a great deal about how government works, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you for coming.
Can I add? I'm really excited for the opportunity to have another woman on council with me.
Have we treated you all right?
I know, but look how, you know, what a nice group of applicants we have here.
Yes, we do.
What a great group.
And we do appreciate working with you folks, and it's always interesting to get your view versus us, because we might be in a little older age bracket, so the change is good.
Thank you guys so much for applying.
I hope I didn't put you on the spot with that question, but I want to thank all you young persons for showing up and showing the interest in helping our community. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number nine. Ordinance 2594 on second reading. City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2594 on second reading. An ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, extending the temporary moratorium to prohibit the establishment of any new or relocation of existing adult gaming arcades, uses, excuse me, within the city limits of the City of Montrose, providing that the moratorium shall be in effect for a period which shall terminate at the earliest of the city's adoption of the amendment to Title IV, Chapter 14, Adult Business Regulations, or the expiration of 730 days from the date of passage of Emergency Ordinance 2560, providing for legislative findings, intent, and purpose, providing repealing clauses, and providing an effective date. And this is Assistant City Attorney Matthew Magliaro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of the city council. I'm here on the second reading of a proposal to extend the citywide moratorium on the adult gaming arcade uses. This would have adopted, extend until September 21, 2023, expiring and auto repealing the September 22, 2023. This was presented at first reading September 6 of this year, a clean version with the recital, whereas clauses is on 14 to 18 of tonight's session packet, and there's a red line on page 19. There are no changes between first reading and this second reading. This was discussed at some length with council in the past, as well as at first reading. Just a brief executive summary here, there was some development on this topic the last legislative session with the passage of House Bill 2022 1412. That was a reauthorization bill for the Division of Gaming within the State Colorado Department of Revenue. As part of that new language, expanded the powers of the Division of Gaming to include the ability to make determinations on whether unlicensed persons to conduct limited gaming are offering to the public in any city, town, city or county, or county unlicensed establishments that allow the use of equipment or devices qualifying as slot machines. This also authorized the Division to engage in a rulemaking. Staff is requesting the additional time reflected in the ordinance to work with the Division of Gaming in the rulemaking process, and dependent upon that, pursue enforcement avenues. With that, I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Magliaro? Seeing none, we'll accept public comment. Is there any member of the public that would wish to address council on this issue? And seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved to adopt ordinance 2594 on second reading as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glassbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to number 10, Ordinance 2595 on second reading. City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2595 on second reading. An ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, amending Title V, Chapter 11, Sections 1, 3, and 8, to reflect recodification of certain sections of the Colorado Revised Statutes. And this is handled by Assistant City Attorney Chris Dowsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. This is the second reading of this ordinance. Again, this is, City Attorney and I, we noticed that the pawnbrokers chapter of our code had some outdated cross-references to Colorado Revised Statutes, and this is merely updating it. There are absolutely no substantive changes whatsoever. Nothing has changed from the first reading. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Dowsey? Seeing none, we'll open a hearing. And are there any members of the public that wish to address us on this item? Seeing none, we will close the hearing and accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2595 on second reading. Second.
There is a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glassbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 11. Ordinance 2596 on second reading. City Council Consideration of Ordinance 2596 on second reading. An ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, amending Title V, Chapter 12 subsections, or Sections 1, 2, 3, 5, 7, 8, 9, and 10, to reflect recodification of certain sections of the Colorado Revised Statutes. And this is City Attorney Ben Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is the companion ordinance to the one for the pawnbrokers that Mr. Dowsey just explained to you. The rationale behind it is identical. When reviewing the code, we noticed that some things had been recodified by the state legislature, but our local municipal code had not changed with it. So this is simply to update those cross-references between our local laws and the state. This was passed unanimously on first reading. There have been no changes since then. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll open a hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to address council on this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing and accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2596 on second reading as presented.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glassbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. I believe in baseball, that would be called balk. All right, moving on to staff reports, and we have our sales, use, and excise tax report from Finance Director Shani Wittenberg.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. Bear with me for a minute. This is the new process. Haven't done this in a while. I always do it in a PDF. Okay, sorry about that. All right, so this is the sales, use, and excise tax collection report for July of 2022. So we're getting into the second half of the year. Hopefully, that'll be as good as the first. General Fund Sales and Use Tax is collected at 3%. July compared to July of 2021, retail sales is up 8.8%, construction use tax is up 7.3%. Use and auto use tax down 5.4%. Total collections up 7.8%, and a positive budget variance of 26.2%. Year-to-date, retail sales taxes up 10.9% or $1.3 million. Construction use taxes up 41.8% or $208,000. Use and auto use tax up 1.3% or $16,000, with total collections up 11.5% or $1.5 million. Positive budget variance again of 30.2% or $3.4 million more has been collected in the general fund than we budgeted. Public safety sales and use taxes went into effect January 1, 2020. 0.58% was added to the 3%. And public safety, July compared to July of 2021, retail sales taxes up 8.8%. Construction use tax is down 44.5%. Use and auto use tax is down 5.4% with total collections up 4.8% or a positive budget variance of 21.2%. Year-to-date, the public safety retail sales taxes up 10.8% or $248,000. Construction use taxes up 15.9% or $21,000. Use and auto use taxes up 1.3% or $2,000, with total collections up 10.5% or $271,000. Again, a positive budget variance of 26.2% or $594,000 more has been collected in the public safety fund than we budgeted. Montrose Recreation District, this tax went into effect June 1 of 2014. It added 0.3% to the sales tax. In July, we collected $228,499, or almost 5% more than we did in July of 2021. Year-to-date, we've collected $1,480,190, or 10.3% more than we did year-to-date in 2021, and that equates to $138,000. Excise taxes, this also adds to the sales tax. Hotel excise tax is 0.9%. Restaurant excise tax is 0.8%. July compared to July of 2021, hotel excise tax is up 5.5%. Restaurant excise tax is up 2.8%, with total collections up 3.5%, and a positive budget variance of 18.1%. Year-to-date compared to year-to-date 2021, hotel excise tax is up 16.2% or $13,000. Restaurant excise tax is up 7.3% or $23,000, with total collections up 9.1% or $36,000. Again, a positive budget variance of 25.2% or $87,000. Retail sales enhancement, in 1990, the vendors gave up a portion of their fee to go towards promoting sales in Montrose. And in July, we collected $54,763, or 10.3% more than we did in July of 2021. And year-to-date, we've collected $344,750, or 10.7% more than we did year-to-date in 2021, which equates to $33,000. With that, I'll entertain any questions you all may have.
Any questions for Shani? We'll be doing the deep dive on the budget tomorrow on our budget review or retreat, so we'll have a chance to ask you all sorts of really fun, hard questions tomorrow.
That sounds great.
All right, thank you. And now we have our other Youth City Council applicant here. If you would, come up to the podium, introduce yourself, tell us a little about yourself, and I will ask you a question after you've done so.
I'm Sean. Okay, hello. My name is Hunter Barton. I go to Montrose High School. I'm a junior. Right now, I'm really looking to build my resume, so I'm involved in many sports, NHS, and I'm looking to help out my city of Montrose with, also with getting a resume builder. Is there anything else you're looking for, or?
I think that describes it pretty well. My question is, what do you think it means to represent the youth of Montrose?
To represent the youth, I think we need to take the best attributes that we can offer, you know, our resourcefulness, our sort of adaptability, you know? We're all in this new generation, which it seems like there's a new trend or whatever every day. So I think representing the youth, you know, we just take our best traits, and we pile them together, and then we make something, we improve, you know? And I really think that I can contribute, and I'm really looking forward to the other representatives of the youth.
Very good, thank you. We appreciate you coming. We appreciate you applying. We look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
Are there any other staff that would like to make a report tonight?
Chief, this is our last meeting before the open house. Do you want to give us an update on that?
Yes, I do. Give me just one second. I'm going to pull up the graphics so that I can write down all these lines correctly.
So, to kill dead airspace. So for the members of our public that are watching this online, this next Tuesday, the 27th, we will be having the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new public safety building, our police station. And to tell us a little bit more about that is Chief Hall.
So I think Greg's going to try to get it up there on the screen. He's got my computer, so I'm going to wing it. So September 27 at noon, we will have our grand opening. It'll start with just a welcome to the public, and we have several both state-elected officials and public safety officials, along with some state representatives, our county-electors. Of course, all of you are esteemed city council members and city staff present for the event. We will run through a list of grand opening speeches, if you will, and then at 12:30, we will break and begin open house kind of tours, if you will. And so we'll have staff members stationed throughout the building. It's not a guided tour, more of a walk-around, to be able to describe the specific spaces of the building. We're really encouraging our public, because the entire public is welcome and invited to this event and all the open house events throughout the week, to come and see the police building. We're proud of it, but we also want to show it off as, you know, just another form of transparency. We want the public to know what this building is going to do for the police department, for the city, and for the community, enhancing our investigations in a way that we can further, you know, our goals as public safety. And so there it is. So the first grand, or the first open house will be 12:30 to 4:00 p.m. on September 27. Then that next morning, Wednesday, at 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., we will open for another open house, if you will. That will be an open house only. We won't start with any type of welcome or speeches. We also, that Wednesday evening and the following Thursday evening, we will have grand opening events for those individuals who might be working, and when they get off work at 5:00 p.m., they can come over and take a tour. You don't have to also arrive right at 8:00 a.m. or 5:00 p.m. to be part of it. You can just walk in, and we'll have staff present to show you through the building. Then that Thursday evening, we also have Latino translated, this is more of a guided tour, through the building, and we'll start that tour in the community room, and then we'll close all of the open house events on October 1 with Farmer's Market in conjunction with Farmer's Market, and that's from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. So I think I got all of those things. I will mention one thing, the Montrose Forum will be hosted that Wednesday morning in our community room and for the forum members, and then we'll just move right into open house events for that. So that's what we have. So we're looking forward to it next week, and it'll just be a great way to close out a two-and-a-half-year project, and then we're looking forward to moving in and using the new building.
Thank you. I think we're all very excited about that as well.
And I know you guys-
And I know you guys got to be tickled to death to have all your staff in one spot.
It is. It's been a challenge the last definitely couple of months, really the last year, to be separated. And so we're really looking forward to being back together and, you know, just the camaraderie and the teamwork that comes along with that. So you're exactly right.
And when do you expect that the police will be in that building and serving the public out of that building instead of the city hall building?
And we've given ourselves an internal goal of two weeks. So really, we need to make sure that everything's in the building, kind of our backend operations, if you will, from patrol to investigations, all the stuff that we have, making sure that it's in its proper place. And then our final move, if you will, will be our front-facing operations. That'll be our customer service operations. So I don't think it'll take up to two weeks, but we're giving ourselves a goal of October fifteenth. But if it's sooner, then we'll definitely open up sooner and probably do a press release saying that the new building is open. But if you still need to visit the police department, we'll be in the same place for customer service in city hall. And that, by the way, has been, where's Shani at? It's been a very good experience. And so I appreciate all of your staff making the police department staff feel welcome in that space. So, thank you.
And South First Street, it will be continued to be closed until the police department is fully moved in. So that will keep the public updated on the opening of that. And that will be one-way, westbound, and has more parking spaces so that people will be able to access the police department as well, the city hall, as soon as that's open.
Exactly correct.
Yeah, but we're going to keep people updated as soon as we can, one way or the other.
I know people are anxious to use South First, so we'll keep them updated and with that final press release as well.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else from any other staff? City council comments?
Looking forward to talking about the budget for nine hours tomorrow.
Yay. Make sure you have a lot of coffee.
I know you are.
All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.